Okay.
Okay. So anyway, so the first thing I was gonna ask you is it's pretty much wrapping up your first year.
Yeah.
What do you consider your greatest success?
My greatest success in this first year? So it's an excellent question, Tracy. As you know, the election in 2023, that was all about public safety. It was all about public safety in the race that, in which I ultimately won and all the races that went on in parallel across the city. And so I am very proud of some of the initial work that we've done on, to address our various public safety challenges. We've passed 11 public safety bills this past session, 11. And including those to streamline and simplify our officer recruitment and hiring efforts. We've been very busy, very, very active and busy, and more to come too. But I'm proud of the initial progress that we've started to make. And because by all measures so far, police hiring and recruitment is up now. Plenty more work to do, and we'll continue that work over time. But proud of some of the public safety work overall that we've been able to accomplish together collaboratively with this mayor, my council colleagues, and the community.
What are those 11?
11, I don't, I don't know offhand, but I'll tell you, we can get you a more detailed list. But I mentioned one of them to streamline and simplify our officer recruitment and hiring initiatives. We, we passed the SODA legislation, which is a very targeted way to, you know, keep people and communities safe. We've done a speed racing bill as it pertains right here to District One. We can get you a full comprehensive list, which is a friendly reminder, folks, please do stay up to speed and get engaged with our own council newsletter. We share out weekly or bi-weekly updates, and you can do that on council, on the council's website.
So what is the status of, a lot of stuff got passed, but what, do you have any sort of timetables about things? Such as, for example, the parallel parking removal on Duwamish Head?
Yeah, so I don't have any timeline on that, although the department has indicated that it is something that they will do, and it's just really a matter of time. I hope it's done expeditiously, and we'll continue to work with impacted stakeholders there in that neighborhood, Elkhai, Duwamish area, as well as SDOT, to really bring about that change. We funded it, so now it's time to build it.
You think the cameras are gonna go in this year, perhaps?
In '25?
Yeah.
In 20, that is my hope. So good news, bad news scenario is, as part of this budget, we funded two different types of cameras. We funded additional cameras for school zones. And by the way, that includes two new schools in West Seattle, one of them at Elkhai Elementary. And I think the other is West Seattle High School, if I recall offhand. We also authorized the expansion of non-school zone speed enforcement cameras as well, and targeted areas in known hotspots, including Elkhai and Harbor Avenue. That one is, is a little more challenging, and, but we're committed to doing everything on our end to help expedite the deployment of those as well. So yeah, a lot of it remains to be seen, but we'll continue to hammer it home, so.
What would you say is your big, your biggest regret from this past year?
Oh man, that is such an excellent question, and it's also a, a good reminder. Please stay tuned to my newsletters, because I do plan to share out, like, when I was in corporate America, when I was in the military, I had to do an annual, you know, periodic review and self-assessment of things. And, you know, now that I'm elected and directly accountable and responsible to 105,000 people, plus hundreds of other small businesses, neighborhood associations, nonprofits, et cetera, I plan to do something similar. But I am, it's, it's something I'm, I'm still, I'm still thinking about, and I, I'm still thinking about. But stay, so stay tuned.
Okay. What grade would you give yourself for your first year?
I don't wanna give myself any grades. I, I'm proud of the work that we've done so far, and I think that's perfectly, that's a question that the people that I'm directly accountable and responsible to, our neighbors here in West Seattle, our neighbors in South Park, Georgetown, Pinehurst Square, and Soto, they would be the best position to answer that question. I'm proud of the work that me and my team have done, in, in large part directly in response to some specific community needs and community engagement and feedback and stakeholder that we've done in our office. And plenty more work to do, of course, but, you know, again, on a specific letter grade, I don't personally want to venture. I think that's a, that's a open, it's a great question for all.
Okay. What are you hearing the most about from people right now?
I'm hearing the most about public safety. That continues to be top of mind and top of people's minds and hearts. People are concerned about officer staffing. People are concerned about, you know, crime, including property crime and small businesses, which is why in this recent budget, we restored the storefront repair fund to help small businesses, you know, fund break-ins and damages to their storefronts. But, but yeah, it's, all of it, just high level continues to be around public safety. And so I know that's, and I guess, good news is, we started to make some initial progress. Officer hiring recruitment up. But some of the, some things like homicides, for example, we haven't made the progress that we need to make in, in those areas. And so that continues to be top of mind for me, and I know many of my constituents.
For the year ahead, what's your priority, your priorities in the public safety area?
Yeah, so that has always been my number one priority, will continue to be so. So wanna continue to make more progress on public safety, particularly with respect to police hiring and recruitment. Also wanna get a better hold of violent crime and property crime as well. So those kind of three core areas within the community safety, public safety umbrella are what I intend to focus on and what I sense the council at large will be primarily focused on in 2025.
In specifics, though, I'm sure there's some legislation that's churning around or that you're thinking about. What specific things do you think we can do to get that tackled?
Yeah, so I, I don't wanna jeopardize or sacrifice the very deliberative process we're at right now, but I can tell you some things in terms of reviewing things that we're, we're just not ready to, me or the council is ready to, to talk about at this stage, because we need to formulate it, get feedback, et cetera. But I will tell you, you know, we are currently considering, you know, something to, that could potentially lift the federal consent decree. So we're considering some crowd control legislation right now that governs SPD's use of various tools and techniques and tactics that we use as a city to, to enable people to lawfully and constitutionally exercise their freedom of speech, freedom of assembly rights, also make sure that we keep people safe. So we're considering some legislation right now exactly on that. We hope to vote on that early next year in January, and if we pass something. And just so you know, like, the inside baseball, if you will, the sausage-baking component of all this, the, the SPD crowd management policies, those have already been approved by the federal judge. And so now we need to, the, the, one of the last steps here in potentially exiting from the consent decree is passing legislation that essentially codifies our crowd management policies.
Do you think we actually have a problem currently managing crowds without that extra legislation passing?
I think it's good when the council has, exercises its legislative authority over the executive regardless of who's in office, and, and so that we have consistency of operations and that the public can know that irrespective of who's in office legislatively or on the executive side, that we know we, as a city, we're gonna live up to our values. Allow people to peacefully, you know, protest, demonstrate freedom of assembly, freedom of speech, all the First Amendment things, basically. But we're, we're gonna do so and also allow, like, to protect people and small businesses and keep people safe while they do that. So that, I think there is an opportunity to do, and again, that is one of the gating items that is preventing us currently from being removed from the consent decree.
But nothing specific that you could talk about regarding cracking down on violent or property crimes, such as you mentioned?
Yeah, so all, more, more to come. I, I had some great meetings earlier today, actually, with the city attorney's office to talk about some possibilities, and we'll continue to explore any number of things to address some of the challenges. But, you know, the, part of it is, a lot of it is, you know, listening to specific concerns from stakeholders and constituents, and we've been doing a lot of that as well, and designing narrowly tailored legislative fixes that could potentially address that. So it's, the legislative process I've learned this first year in office is a, is a complex undertaking, and it clouds, it involves input from a lot of stakeholders. So we'll continue down that path and continuing to collaborate, of course, with all, with everyone involved.
Okay, let's, we're on to another topic that's important for you, because you're the chair of the Transportation Committee. What are you looking in, in the new SDOT director?
That's a, that's a great question. So I learned with, with the public last week, I believe, that the new SDOT, or our current SDOT director Greg Spotts has submitted his resignation to the mayor, so he will be stepping down in February. So first off, I wanna thank Director Spotts for his service. I think he served the city for two-plus years, one of which was with me. And so I appreciate his partnership and all that he's done for the city. In his replacement, I'm gonna be, like, this council, we've had a two-thirds turnover of council members last year and when I took office. And I think that was a seismic shift in priorities for the council and individual council members. And we've, we've learned that council members are really concerned with some of the micro neighborhood-specific issues and projects that happen in their own council districts, myself included. And so I think before the SDOT, their stakeholder management process with, with the council was mostly an inform. Now, you know, we, I think a lot of my colleagues, we want to be brought in along that process. Recognizing the mayor, that is ultimately an executive decision on how. But I think, me personally, and I think a lot of my council member colleagues, we wanna be brought in more, like, earlier in the process. So I think the ability to navigate a, a council-district system as opposed to a city-wide system and, and, you know, all the peculiarities, no, I said that right, that, that implies obviously someone with strong budget ability, you know, SDOT's budget is huge. And thank you again to the generous voters of Seattle, including West Seattle, for authorizing the $1.55 billion transportation levy that, as chair of the Transportation Committee, I was co-architect of. And so we'll continue to make progress on that. But I want, so one of the learnings that we had, as you may know, Tracy, from the last levy, the expiring levy, was it took SDOT a while to, like, get up to speed and ramp up and to start building and executing upon the laundry list of projects. And so I want someone who's, the department's already done a lot of great work with the levy and preparation. In large response to some of the council direction, we asked them to prepare a readiness, an assessment report. And through online document, by the way, read it if you, if you get a chance. But they've already done a lot of terrific legwork, and so it's, the next step is, you know, we need someone who's actually just gonna bring everything to life and put our city in the ability, in a position to start quickly executing upon and constructing these great projects. Including, by the way, 350 new sidewalks and cost-effective sidewalk alternatives in the city, at least 22% of which are gonna be right here in District One. And I'm proud of the one in, in, off of Brandon, I think it's Brandon. It's long, it was a long-promised project, long-promised by the city, and magically it always just fell right below the cut line in terms of budget funding priorities. People, some people would argue, well, make the adjacent property owner pay the, pay to build a new sidewalk. In this case, unfortunately, the city is the adjacent property owner. This is by the golf course on both sides. And so proud that we're able to finally deliver and fund that. And there's a lot of signature projects in that levy, you know, safe routes to school and various investments. But just making sure this new director is able to, again, execute and build upon that, all those projects.
How about a change in philosophy in terms of projects that are not, like, stipulated by the levy or whatever? Do you think that change of director might change some of the, the direction?
I mean, yeah, it sure could, yes, because as you know, the levy, it created what was essentially a roadmap, a promise, a commitment to voters. And with 66.5% approval rating that Seattle voter, like, it's resoundingly clear. People want these cool things that we put together. That, that's not necessarily intended to be an exhaustive list of, of everything, but it is a good roadmap. And, and also that in parallel with the Seattle Transportation Plan, which we also passed earlier this year, and council priorities and, and, you know, collaboration with the mayor. But the, the department also retains a fair amount of flexibility as well to, to do any number of things. That's why I was like, I don't think you really need funding for these cameras that we authorized, but hey, here it is, just in case. And, and so, in any event, just someone who, with both technical expertise and just hyper-technical expertise and then proven leadership, and then the ability to manage various stakeholders, especially including community, whether it's the, the community is the council, impacted communities that they're building a project around. We just wanna do a better job as a city. We always have a continuing opportunity to, to incorporate feedback. And so, you know, we wanna take the great work that's already been done by the department in many respects and just take it to the next level and get better.
So by hyper-technical expertise, do you think that perhaps it would be better for this next SDOT director to have more of an engineering-type background than the current one, or?
Yeah, I don't, that, that could be helpful. I, I hope they have some technical expertise, because one thing that I've personally learned as a policymaker in this role is that there's two sort of bodies of policy law that are probably the most complex and the most technical, and that's land use. And we're going through our comp plan process next year, and then transportation policy, hyper-technical. And so I, I think, yeah, table stakes, they, they should have some sort of baseline, but they should also have those other characteristics and more. Ultimately, it's the mayor's choice, who, who, and then they would go through the council's confirmation process. So this is a, this is a topic that I had an initial productive conversation. I mean, it's the mayor's choice, and we, we gotta make sure he's the right fit for the city. But, you know, we'll continue to collaborate with the executive on this, because this is a very impactful position that impacts people's lives in so many profound ways, so.
To say the least.
Yep.
You mentioned the comp plan. That's kind of a hot topic at the moment, the rezoning plan. Have you had any communication with the mayor's office about things that you wanna make sure once the rezoning plan, before it gets to you guys in the council?
No, 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 well, let me just say, I've had a lot of communication with the mayor's office about this plan. I've had a lot of communication through, through me directly and my various legislative assistants with community members on what they would like to see. Currently, up until the next few days or few weeks, it's an executive-led process. They're, they, the executive has done the hard work in creating all these maps and implementing legislation, and then they're gonna propose that to council, at which point we are gonna lead the review process of what the final thing looks like. So I've had many productive conversations with the mayor, getting briefings on directionally where things currently stand, what they're hearing from community, if it's in line with what we're hearing, meetings with our central staff policy experts, and briefings from them on, on what this means and the potential policy implications of this. But that is an important process. Last year, for, for this council, I think it was largely outside of public safety, which we're always focused on. I think in '25, we're gonna be focused on, heavily focused on the comp plan, because we have literally, like, state-required deadlines that we're subject to. I think it'll also be, this vacancy will, will be important body of work for us as well in the early part of next year as well. So yeah, I've had conversations, those remain ongoing, with the understanding that our process is gonna kick off in earnest next year.
Do you agree that the rezoning is really the only way to increase housing and theoretically bring down prices?
It is a hugely important way in doing that, not the only way. But I know that, we know that adding more housing options and choices, including affordable housing options throughout the city, is going to help address some of the broader affordability challenges that our city is facing. And so it is an important opportunity that we're required to do under the State's Growth Management Act every 10 years. And, but it's not the only, only thing we can do, but it's just a natural moment, point in time, where, like, the state says, every minispouty, including Seattle, go figure out how you're gonna plan to grow and grow for the next 10, 20 years going forward. So it's not everything, but it is a really important thing.
Do you see anything else that perhaps the council might initiate to help with that process?
I don't currently anticipate, but anything in that space, but nothing is ever off the table. I don't unfortunately sit on the, the land use committee where a lot of these ideas outside of our select committee that's going to be convened next month to, to kind of review the comp plan, you know, where a lot of these other non-select committee scoped items would be heard initially and generated. But, you know, anything's possible.
Is there any uniquely District One angle to this that you are particularly watching for? Any particular, you know, area or any particular aspect of the possible increased development?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, at this point, I'm gathering feedback and listening to what our neighbors in West Seattle, what our neighbors in South Park, Georgetown, Pinehurst Square, and Soto, what they have to say and what they wanna see done and accomplished, and in some cases, what they don't wanna see done and accomplished through this plan and process. I'm, I'm particularly interested in, in hearing that. And, you know, the executive has done, held a number of D1-specific forums, and I've attended one about a month ago where they're soliciting feedback. So yeah, just why, I'm, I'm interested in, in hearing what, what people have to say, with the understanding, wherever we land with the final thing, it's not going to please 100% of the people, but, but do wanna make sure as much of it, wherever we land, the final thing, you know, that by the summer sometime, I think that's the current timeline, it incorporates as much feedback, from my perspective, from District One residents and small business owners as possible, so.
You live in Delridge, which is undergoing a lot of redevelopment. What do you think has been gotten right in that area and what could have been better since you guys have the ability to shape things moving forward?
Yeah, so I think there's been some positive things in terms of development and, and housing options in Delridge. We wanna make sure we grow responsibly as well, and by responsibly, I mean, like, when you add density, you need to add corresponding, like, amenities and infrastructure to support additional residents. So a good example of that is grocery stores. So, you know, there's this whole construct of a 15-minute walkable neighborhood, which I support, the basic notion that everyone should be able to, to, to live within 15-minute walk of wherever you need to go, whether it's, you know, enjoying some, a, a great local restaurant, purchasing fresh vegetables, going to, like, a grocery store, post office, whatever it is. But I know, especially living in Delridge, that 15-minute walkable neighborhood is, in many respects, it's a pipe dream for some. There's some great, there's some great, like, fresh food choices, for example, in Delridge already, and working with communities to expand that and, and, you know, do more. But, you know, Delridge is still largely a food desert. So is the Duwamish Valley, so Georgetown and South Park, which is why in this most recent budget, or thoughtful planning, there's stuff we can do, and it's full circle, thank you for helping me think about it. You know, there's stuff we can do during the comp plan and outside of the comp plan, before and after, and in parallel with it. So during the budget, I, I funded a report, a study to, like, help address where, like, like food deserts. There's three in my district, but they're all across the city. So how can we truly build a more 15-minute type of walkable neighborhood across the city? Part of that requires thoughtful planning, so, yeah.
In the next round of thoughtful planning, then, what about displacement? Certainly Delridge has had a problem with that.
Absolutely. Delridge has had a, suffered its lion's share of displacement. Outside of this district, so has, like, the Central District, for example. And so, yeah, we wanna make sure as we grow, part of responsible growth and planning requires appropriate anti-displacement strategies. That means policies and things like rates of first refusal. If we have to close down this, this, you know, resident, like, those people get priority rights. If, if a new building is created, they get priority to be there. It also includes relocation assistance, so wherever they need to go is their next step in their journey for, for new development. They, they're, we have funding to make sure they're transitioned on that and ultimately made whole. But, but that is an important, very important aspect of this whole comp plan process that we're gonna be considering, because it's, so it's not just Delridge, we're gonna be looking at that in Highland Park and High Point and other kind of historically marginalized communities across, across this district, South Park, Georgetown. So we need to grow and grow responsibly, and that means a variety of things, as we talked about.
Speaking of East-West Seattle, talk to me about the criticism over your big budget priority, the divider thing by the preschool. Do you feel that you've been misunderstood in how that all played out?
Yeah, so first and foremost, I, I wanna, I wanna speak to what exactly that is and clarify that. So the authorizing budget legislation is several hundred pages, and that particular line item, it speaks to things like boring ingress and egress routes, but it doesn't say anything about divider or, or curb or anything like that. So I just wanna clear, so I guess from that perspective, yeah, like, there, there is some confusion swirling around that. But ultimately, what that project is about, it's about safety for all. I wanna make sure that regardless of your mode of travel, whether you choose to walk, bike, take the bus, drive, by the way, I've done, I do all of those, all of the above. I prefer the all of above approach, yes and, that you can do so safely throughout our city. And so that is exactly what that project is about, safety for all, irrespective of your preferred mode of travel. As background, that is a, that impacted area, it impacts a small business, a community center, a, a recipient of what's called our EDI funding, EDI program, so Equitable Development Initiative for Anti-Displacement. As we talked about, one form of anti-displacement, here we are talking about another. So we heard loud and clearly that anti-displacement is appropriate, is, is something that, you know, we, we need to be mindful of and continue to fund strategies around, including this. And, you know, it's also primarily full of immigrant refugee workers, families, and so, yeah, it's, it's about creating safety for all.
And what were the stats that led you to make that proposal?
The stats?
Crash stats or injuries, fatalities in that particular area?
Yeah, so first off, there, there was years, probably decades, where there was no, the, the issues that we're trying to address through this budget item, the free ingress egress, safe egress, ingress of, of, of all travel. There, there was not, there was, there wasn't an issue before 2021, when, you know, they, they, they put this new construction up. And so I, I don't, I would be curious to hear from, you know, like, SDOT and the people who decided, designed this, like, what were the, what was the actual data and stats that, you know, like, resulted in them erecting this thing to begin with? But all that aside, you know, nitty-gritty data and details aside, what really was, was impactful in this was the overwhelming community support that we heard from this, from all communities. The impacted daycare and small business, the Refugee and Immigrant Family Center, neighbors, you know, other allies of this community group. So we heard over, like, during the budget process, dozens and dozens of people took the time to write counsel, show up and testify in favor of this safety project for all. And so that's really what informed it, community.
Right, but there's lots of community voices and lots of things. But what did they say was particularly unsafe? Had they had close calls, or?
Yeah, well, so I, we, we've learned as part of this that since this, this new modified construction of this impacted area, they've, they, that community has had two or three accidents as a direct result of that. So it's really, again, it's just, it's safety for all, safety for all. So safety was what people wanted to be able to safely navigate their way around the city as they interact with our transportation infrastructure. And so what this is about is the same thing it's about in all areas of transportation infrastructure, which I oversee, in part through my role as chair of the Transportation Committee, is safety.
You mentioned the community center. Do you mean Delridge Community Center?
In this case, I mean the Refugee and Immigrant Family Center.
Okay, is that a preschool?
Refugee, yes, it is a preschool, it is a small business.
Okay, because you mentioned the community center and a preschool. I was gonna say the community center is some, away as in the, in the other direction.
Yeah, yeah, further north on Youngstown.
So are there boundaries for this besides that Delridge and Myrtle area?
Eh, you'd have to double-check the legislation, but the, I think the boundaries are set forth in the legislation. It might be just that, I don't know, we'd have to get back to you, but, yeah.
Okay. One other thing in the budget that I've gotten a lot of questions about from people. Okay, um, one other thing in the budget that I've gotten a lot of questions about from people. Um, talk to me about the Fairmont Playfield turf thing.
Yeah, the turf conversion project, so uh, that is a another exciting investment that we're doing to. To fund an infield, only the infield, so basically where there's dirt and mud today. And the infield portion of the Fairmont Park Playfield will be converted to eco-friendly and environmentally safe turf. So again, we're just talking about the infield portion. Uh, but we've heard, uh, and the council at large has heard overwhelming support in favor of that project. So how that came about, and I sent out a a newsletter with a sort of deep policy dive on the same exact topic, so. First off, let me say, I am proud to say that my council district, this council district, District One. Uh, has the second highest concentration of uh, under eighteen youth out of out of all the seven council districts. So we have a lot of working families in this district, uh, including those that rely heavily on on softball. Uh, so, and baseball, and so we've heard over and over again, uh, from from constituents in this district and and out across the city. Who are aligned on, you know, like ultimately, uh, gender access, gender parity issues, Title Nine compliance. Uh, and and safety, people don't wanna get tripped in mud and 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 playability issues. Um, so what, because of a direct response to community, what me and my office did. We proactively engage with five, there are five community recreational baseball leagues and softball leagues that serve my constituents. And the most prominent as it relates to this, uh, are West Seattle Baseball and West Seattle Little League. But we engaged with all five, that serve all five neighborhoods in District One. We got, we culled together a list of eight options, and then we sent out a survey in September. And let, basically let the community decide, and hundreds and hundreds, four hundred, five hundred, almost five hundred people took the survey. And the overwhelming favorite was the Fairmont Park Playfield. So, uh, that is a a good example of how me and my office, we initiated community decision, decision making. And incorporated community decision making directly into the budget. Uh, but yeah, I I recognize that like all investments, it can never please a hundred percent of the people all the time, and I understand that. Um, but my goal is to make sure we have the most impactful investment that that do the greatest good for the greatest amount. And minimize, and 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 while we're there, try to minimize as much as possible, um, you know. The the impacts on some people who who might not want that or like that.
Yes, and in fact, there were a couple of people who P D R'd the entire survey and they took offense to the fact that you didn't mention at all. That actually the number one response was other or we don't want anything. So I wondered, wondered what you thought about the fact that you only addressed the rest of the survey.
Yeah, so the number one response was other. Uh, I, in in fairness, like, if if you wanna like talk about that, it's it's fine. Go ahead and talk about all this five hundred something, uh, other responses that we got. It was like, what does this mean? Uh, sure, yeah, no, no, uh, none of the above was was on that. Any number of things, um, this other nine, eight, because we we curated a list of eight. So there was a lot of options, that was, that was the most, uh, the highest number of response. So that's why I said, out of the eight that we curated, out of the eight projects that we curated, that was the number one response.
But there was no reason to mention the fact that you got, you know, significant responses. Aside from that, because there were a lot of concerns that were raised also in the comments, such as people wondering about safety of turf and so forth.
Yeah, so this is a safety project. Uh, that, it's fundamentally about safety, it's fundamentally about playability of the fields, uh, it's it's about gender parity. More in Seattle, more girls' softball fields tend to be grass and in this case mud. Because let's be honest, the only impactive part of this field is is the mud that's going to be converted to turf. Um, so there are a lot of important safety uh concerns that we took into account. And there are three infield, similar projects across the city that we funded as part of this budget. And the Fairmont Project was one of them, we also funded one in Garfield. Uh, and somewhere on the north end, I don't remember offhand, but it's part of a a strategic effort to increase the number of. Turf playfields that we have in the city, so it was about safety, it was about those things, and again, I understand, we can't. We can't please everyone all the time, but we did hear overwhelming, overwhelming community support from West Seattle Little League. West Seattle Baseball, all the the like families, coaches, grandparents who were like, yes, we love this thing. And and again, uh, I, Reddit threads are not an appropriate forum for.
This wasn't right, that's what I'm talking about, people who read.
Sure, 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 yeah, yeah, but we, all 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 I'll say is, we heard overwhelming support in favor of this. And and again, I recognize that, you know, it, some people don't, don't like this. Uh, but I'm I'm here to make sure we do the best thing for the greatest number, uh, and, yeah.
So what are you gonna do with the like number two and number three placements? Do you have any future proposals or?
Nothing yet, no, 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 nothing, nothing yet, but uh, yeah, I'm I'm excited about this, this new Fairmont Park project. And making sure that, well, it's funded now, make sure it actually gets built.
So overall, in terms of, obviously, it's a difficult dealing with the public. Um, has anything been uh, been, you know, a surprise to you during the first year in terms of? Reaction, interaction, you know, how that's all played out?
Yeah, no, no major surprises, I, you know, like during the campaign. Ha, overcame some unprecedented things myself, so I I'm familiar, so that was a good sort of precursor or. Intro into uh what I signed up for exactly, so no major surprises. Um, I'm just, I still do wake up every day and feel honored to do this work. Uh, again, you know, like, I welcome feedback. And and feedback isn't the, isn't the same as like, I'm gonna a hundred percent incorporate everything you tell me, but I always. Uh, you know, endeavor to listen to everything and make sure that whatever decision I do make is one that isn't informed one.